I'm under the impression that the recorder comes through clearer than the TV comes through. So for anybody that needs to transcribe, the recorder is better.
I need seven six six six.
Yeah, I estimated the last Tuesday meeting and he said definitely needs it. Vincent, I'm gonna call you. Do you have something the girls made for recorder? We're trying to stop the meeting.
Huh?
Oh, he's got that recorder. It's on.
Hey, when I was in charge of...
Do you support the marathon? You have the three, the four grants here?
I have the, I'll explain the four grants. Yes, I have the documents here.
Jesus, not the grant.
My kids from you, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
He's got the Navy memo right there.
This one might be better here. All of us were up here about five minutes before. Nobody saw the recorder wasn't here.
So you saw it being there, huh?
Here's the recorder now.
Hello.
Thank you.
It's on, yeah, it's on. Okay, everybody, you ready? June 3 work session, all members present.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Supervisor, I'll be brief. This is, we have one site plan.
Why not? Should we put the tape back this?
Yeah, I want to talk about the site plan.
Okay, June 3 work session, all members present.
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, Pete is out today. It's his birthday, so I'm handling the site plans. I hope to handle it well. I'll be brief. What you have before you is L and K, a site plan for reconstruction, actually, the parking lot. L and K, as you know, is one of the largest pharmaceuticals that we have in our industrial park. They have over 600,000 square feet in various different buildings. What they are doing here, and there's an aerial photograph attached to this, is totally reconstructing the parking lot. And the amount of work that they did was not eligible for site plan exemption because it goes beyond the minimum limits. But they're reconstructing their entire parking lot to add for more truck facilities as well as for more parking. Basically, that's it unless there's, the board would like to see the plans, which I have them here. That's it for this afternoon.
So what condition is on there?
Basically, what you have is, you know, the standard conditions that they had to apply for building permits.
All right, and then they've agreed to do all that?
Yeah, they, we have a signed agreement that they've agreed to all the conditions.
Okay, so we'll need that today.
And the only changes is that on their plans, they didn't show a minimum buffer. This was an old site that did not have a six-foot buffer between sites like we required after 1974. Since they're reconstructing the parking lot and they have the amount of space, we told them to reinstall the buffer around the entire site. It's a six-foot setback, planted setback, and they've agreed to do that. They've agreed to that.
Okay?
Frank, I have one question. Actually, it has to do with this, the orange mesh fence that started back in 1998.
Yes.
Has to be, the building department has to check it before they issue the building permit.
Or DEW, I think, checks it.
Either or. And what happened to, in Comac, or it was borderline at Comac there, with the gas station that took out all the woods behind them? Was the orange fence up, not up?
They didn't have permission to do anything on that site. That, you're talking about the gas station next to the car wash?
Right.
Okay, what happened there was they got a building permit to replace.
They shouldn't get the building permit until someone tells building that the fence is up.
No, 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 let me finish. The building permit was for replacement of gas tanks.
Okay.
That was in the ground. The only thing that was supposed to have occurred, at least with building, was the gas tanks that were to be replaced. What the applicant did on that particular site was did site renovations, went in, cleared the buffer, did all things that were not part of the building permit and got summons for that.
I think in the future, and tell them if it, like the DEC does, no matter what you're doing, you put hay bales. No matter what anybody does, they should put the orange fence around the buffers.
I would agree, but except in this particular case, the applicant went well beyond.
I know, but if the orange fence was there, they can't claim. I didn't know.
Okay, that's...
I don't value what everybody else thinks about it.
But that was, I'll mention that to, this was, it did not come through our office because this was a replacement of tanks.
Right.
So normally, when a gas station comes in and they need to replace underground tanks, they just get a building permit from the building department. But the applicant, in this case, chose it to, well, the big issue was they went into the buffer, cleared the, a large portion of the buffer to store the materials that they were excavating on the site. And they built a big pile there, and that's what the, we got a lot of complaints from the residents in the back. And it went beyond what was done, but however that...
So orange fence, no matter what the scope of the work is, was everything about that?
I think it should be done. I'll mention that to building when they issue permits.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Supervisor, that concludes site plans.
Was this, this, give it to me, probably, you know?
I'm sorry?
Is that the read on to send those folks?
Yes, that's the only one. The other rest are on agenda.
There's a read on to send three employees from the town attorney's office to Loroman Education Services on strategies for locating people online for paralegals, costs $398. And that's going to happen on June 25th and June 19th. Is that correct?
Mr. Supervisor, should I bid to the grant application for King's Park Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, well, where is that? You don't have it yet?
I have the wording of it, but I'm gonna give it to the supervisor. The King's Park Chamber of Commerce is applying for a grant from the county. They want a letter of support. They're working under a deadline, so the supervisor was asked to read it on. So I, you know, I believe we're all in support of them.
What do they want to do with it?
Well, I'm not exactly sure, but I was thinking that they, what they wanted to do is intersection improvement at Church Street. What they want to do is redesign the intersection so that it's more pedestrian friendly.
Church and?
Church and what?
Church and Main Street.
In Main Street, yeah.
Where the two lights are coming into the...
Well, no, not there, the northern side, because if you go to the southern side, you have the county, the county road, and you have the state road. So they have a, you have a, what they want to do is on the town side, because they're still gonna have an issue because they have to work with the state. But I believe they want to put in, what these, the new things are is to put in these pedestrian islands at the intersection so that they jut out. So they make the crosswalk shorter to turn. So I think they want to try that at that location.
So they just need a letter?
They just need a resolution of support, and on the application, they do all the work and they send it, and they also do all the funding.
And box is the box.
It's on, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so now you want to get to NYSRDA?
Well... Let me give you a brief synopsis, because I sent, and Dave sent a number of memos to you with regard to grant applications. Let's back up. The state of New York now has new way they're issuing grants through what they call the consolidated funding agreements, I think, CFAs. And what that means is, like, the majority of grants that the state is going to be giving out on a wide variety of things comes through this particular program. And we got the announcement, or the supervisor received the announcement in the first week in May and sent a memo to all the departments to examine the program and to come up with grant applications that might be suitable for the town. And I would stress "might be" because it's still your decision as to whether or not you wish to participate. Now, the, most of the applications are due by June 16th. And we didn't receive, well, we didn't have a work session with regard to any of this, so we couldn't have discussed this between the time we sent the memos and the time the grant, some of the grant material was due. So we, on our own initiative, begun work on a number of these things. For example, yesterday, my staff went to, where was it?
Empire State Development.
Okay, Empire State Development to do a presentation on the advertisement grants for the hike and bike trail. And this is required because the way grants are reviewed now is there are regional economic councils in which our grants have to go through them. And I don't, this is the same, they started this last year, most of you are familiar with it. If you don't go, if you, if you don't make it through the council, chances are your grants are dead. Okay, so we already had to make preliminary works, and that's what a lot of this stuff was, to at least reserve our place in line. The town could pull back at any time on any of these grants, so we were not presuming that you were going to go along with this. But we, at the same time, we're working under deadlines. There are four basic grants that we are working with that we think are of interest to the town. One of the most important being one NYSRDA grant for the composting project that we're working on with the Carlson property. As you are aware, we are working with the applicant about producing an indoor composting facilities. And one of the recommendations that we had made was to consider that and hire a consultant in order to develop an ordinance in relationship to that. Now, in the interim, the board may be aware also that we had some issues with regard to DEC and whether or not they would supersede us in terms of our regulations. This, unrelated to this, we have sent a description of our action to Peter Scully, and we believe that we could come up with a program that can allow the town to regulate these activities in the manner in which we think is worthwhile. Therefore, we think that, as I said before, I think this activity is worthwhile for the town to pursue. What we're basically talking about is having an indoor yard waste processing facility indoors, and that's what this grant is all about. And the grant amount, the town share of this grant will be for $250,000 to get a consultant in that would do all the work for us. And our share would be approximately $62,000. That's one aspect. The second, or one application, the second application which I just mentioned was the hike and bike trail. And this, you may not understand it in the, because of the shortness of the trail, but we, actually, the work that we did on the trail is of some significance. If I may, this is a little handout that was prepared by staff to show what we're doing. When we connected the hike and bike trail, when we connected the hike and bike trail to the downtown area with the new grant, with the help of the Chamber of Commerce, what we did was make this accessible to the Long Island Railroad. And this may sound incongruous, but the, one of the few things that we have is we have a Greenbelt Trail that runs north and south, and there are two railroad connections now to the Greenbelt Trails that we have. And one of them is in, on the south shore in Great River. And the other one now is in the town of Smithtown in terms of the Kings Park Station. What this does is now connects, allow us to connect onto all the trails that we have, both for the Greenbelt Trails and the trails that go through Sunken Meadow. And what we'd like to do is work in a program in advertising this particular item. And so far, we've received a lot of support on this particular, including from the Long Island Railroad itself. And we'd like to proceed on making a grant application, which is, I think is relatively modest, that the town share will be basically $20,000 in terms of this particular program. And what we will do is really prepare a program for advertising of this particular connection that we have on the north shore so that people, and there are a lot of hikers who are out there, who will come by via railroad, now be able to hike through these trails, and if necessary, either come through to Smithtown now and connect on to the Smithtown Railroad Station, or go all the way down to Great River and connect back on that way. So we feel that this is, there's a vibe...
How's it gonna connect to Great River?
The Greenbelt Trail goes all the way down to Great, all the way down. It's on the back here. You could see, there's the trail.
Very carefully.
I never knew. I mean, that's a lot of traveling.
Well, there's a lot of hikers out there who like to take these kind of routes, and we think it is a viable use for this particular trail. It's one of the ideas of why we wanted to connect onto it.
Jesus.
We have the ability now, this program is going to be to advertise that capability, and it's going to be actually undertaken by the railroad themselves, and it's going to be advertising as a feature.
In a short couple of sentences, what will the advertising say, so to speak?
Well, basically, it will advertise the ability for them to take the train out and connect directly to, you know, less than a block away, they could get onto their trails.
Well, and know these trails are there.
Yes, and obviously, usually what happens in a lot of these locations where you have a terminal location or a starting location, it helps local businesses, you know, that, you know, for services and, and whatever. You know, Dave seems to feel that we can even get outfitters, you know, a small outfitter on this. I think that would be probably in the long term. In the short run, the businesses, delis and other places will benefit from this. So I think it's relatively modest and good, and we would recommend that in terms of doing this. Okay, the third grant is related to our Green Homes program. And this is, we're looking at a three-year program. We're talking $90,000 to $30,000 a year. As you are aware, we were, most of you may not be aware that in the Green Homes program, the town of Smithtown was the second most successful town in getting people to do energy audits. For, and that's, you know, numerically, that's of all the towns that have done that. The only town that did better than us was Babylon, and Babylon has a full-time staff that deals with energy renewal. So with just part-time work, we did a very significant impact with regard to that particular program. And I think that it shows that there's a demand and need for that. And so what has happened is, is that the consortium that was working on the Green Homes program, which has now ended, would like to now to apply for a $6 million grant to work on what they call energy renewal activities. And these are activities with regard to solar, geothermal, wind power and the like for homes. And the town share would be $30,000 a year, of which we would get $100,000 a year. This is the same amount of money that we had with the Green Homes program.
Okay, so specifically, what would you do with the $100,000?
Basically, you advertise the program and do the inventories for the people to show them how they could install solar or how they could do renewable energies and how, what kind of savings they're gonna achieve on that property.
And who's gonna do that?
We hire, we hire contractors to do that. We do the advertisements. And the, I would mention too, the staff time that's devoted to this gets reimbursed with part of this $100,000. So, just like the Green Homes program.
So if somebody were interested in...
Solar panels.
Then you would assign that person to a consultant?
We would have a contractor that would contact them. They would review it, and they would tell them, you know, there's a lot of things like how the house is placed, where it's at, whether it's a viable option or not. So that, you know, a lot of these things that the people themselves are interested, but they don't know if it's really going to work. That's really what the question is. And so what we're doing is we're allowing, or trying to answer that particular question for them.
What's the deadline on these grants?
June 16th, that's...
Frank, you said it costs $30,000 and you get $100,000 back, is that what you...
We get $100,000 a year, and we have to put, a year, and we have to put in $30,000.
A year, $30,000, a year?
Thirty thousand a year, total.
So you get 70?
Yeah, well, actually, we get $100,000, it's $130,000 is the cost of the program. So we have to put in $30,000, and it's $100,000 we get about.
Over.
Yes.
For years?
For three years. And we think this is a viable, we did a very good job with the Green Homes program. I think, you know, this is gonna be island-wide, this is CDC, is it CDC that's making the application?
It's the CDC, the Community Development Corporation, for the Sustainability Institute that owns the town.
Okay.
To, will be the lead actor.
So it's all the towns that are gonna be involved, and we think, or at least the same towns that were involved in the Green Homes program, so...
So it doesn't really cost us anything?
Well, $30,000 a year.
Yeah, but you get money back.
Yes.
You get seven, you get a hundred, which is seven.
Yes, I, you do get, you get a, this is...
You get $100,000 worth of, $100,000 worth of value for $30,000.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, the last item, which the supervisor called me about and wanted to know why we're proposing this, and that is to put an electronic charging station in the industrial park. Actually, what this is part of is an overall program. The application, we're not gonna make the application, the town of North Hampton's gonna make the application on behalf of all the towns on Long Island. And what we're hoping to do is to participate in this and to come up with an electro, a charging station. We chose the industrial park as the first location. It's not the only charging station that we want, but the first location. Mostly because there's a lot of employees, there's almost 50,000 employees that go in that particular location, so it's, it's a very big destination location. Second reason is, what we're trying to do is, as the town board is aware, we have a broad strategy in trying to improve our industrial park. We have the sewer system that we're working on right now. We have the overlay districts that we're working with. We're doing the substation for the, which Kennedy is working on for that particular area. We're working on new fiber optic cable for the industrial park. So this is just one more step in trying to improve the industrial park. What we're trying to do is trying to keep one step ahead of everybody else in terms of trying to have probably the most attractive park on the island. And I think this will only add to it.
So my question to Frank was, the beneficiary, you could say townwide, but the beneficiary is that hot park industrial park?
Right.
Why don't they apply for the grant, since they're about to be the beneficiaries?
We're the ones who are going to initiate this. This is the town-sponsored grants, and we do want the HIA to work with us on this, and maybe even, they may even contribute some of this later. But we have to work in the worst-case scenario. That's what you have here. The best-case scenario is I might get the HIA, if they have the resources, to take care of most of this, and they're gonna be the beneficiaries. But in the interim, we believe that the future is, is that we're going to have more types of alternate energy type of facilities, whether they be natural gas or electronic charging.
Okay, but I just want to be a little argumentative here.
Certainly.
For sake of argument, the beneficiaries are going to be the park itself and whoever works there.
I would...
Allow me to finish.
Okay.
Okay. The electric company is the one that makes the money, correct? By selling the electricity for these vehicles. Other than overall saying that we have a, all, all, and, what's the word when you use everything, all in one?
Inclusive?
Inclusive, that's the word. And that's the benefit, to say we have an all-inclusive park. But the real beneficiaries of the town money are the people who are gonna get the electricity.
Certainly, you can make that argument, but I would make a counter-argument. My argument is, is that what you try to do, you try to do a lot of little things to make your parks better over, and I'm talking about how the industrial parks, better overall. I mean, we, we put in lighting in our industrial park, and certainly, there's other streets in the town of Smithtown that needs it. You do this to make your park as good as you possibly can.
You want to attract, you want to attract businesses.
Yeah, you want to attract businesses, and you want to...
It benefits the rest of the community.
Yeah, you, you want to make it look like you're, you're state-of-the-art. And I think in the long run, when you do, we don't do very hard marketing here, and we don't have an industrial advisory board, but the park almost sells itself because it is really that good. This just adds another feature onto it. We have a sewer system, we have overlay districts, we have new electric substations. These are things that you cumulatively add value to your park, and I think it's relatively modest expense.
What's the dollar figure?
Well, it's a $30,000 matching. It's, the grant itself is gonna be for $625,000. But the, we anticipate that there are gonna be six charging stations placed, and one of them is gonna be in the hot hog industrial.
And what's our share?
Our share would be $30,000, and we would get about $100,000.
For?
For one charging station.
Now, what's, what's a charging station?
Sorry, it would be more than one charging station. We're looking for a handful of charging stations in each town.
For $30,000 on a town?
I'm talking about in a town, one charging station.
No, a couple, a couple of them.
Now, could I just get a, what's a, one, for one car?
Well, no, actually, we'll probably have for at least a couple of cars, because one car would not work.
So how many charging stations overall?
Allison, you're...
This is Allison Murray, who's on my staff.
Thank you.
And she's in charge of that particular program.
Hello, Mr. Supervisor, on the town board.
Allison also worked, was the leader in the Green Homes program, just to let you know.
What the consortium is, is expecting is to have at least four to five charging stations in each township as part of this grant, along the east-west corridor. So the whole purpose of it is to allow people to travel from one end of the island to the other with, with these types of vehicles.
It doesn't sound like a lot of charging stations.
Well, but what it, it, while it's not, but what you have, in order to have electric vehicles right now, you have very small number of charging stations. And we do have some companies now that are putting in charging stations in some gas stations. What this is going to do, and I think what Allison is mentioning, is we're, we're trying to put them, I guess, on the expressway so that we, at least as an island, a region, and then for us, will have a locations that are...
I'm sorry, I think it's a great idea, but it doesn't seem like you're getting much for your buck.
I think...
You said it's $100,000.
Yeah, yes.
Of $30,000, and you're only getting two charging stations for two cars?
Yes, they're very simple, by the way. They're just, they're just units with plugs and, and you, you go through them. But keep in mind that we're going towards alternate energy anyways. We have, we're dealing with natural gas distributions, and we're dealing with electrical, and this is the future that we're going to have. Many of your distributors, especially your local distributors, are going to be switching to electric vehicles sooner or later. And, you know, one of the things is, is that this will allow us to have some sort of advantage in having at least some charging stations within the town.
And I agree, but when you say some, and the sum is two, that's not a lot of charging stations to make the industrial park so very attractive, Frank. If you told me it was 100, then I could see it.
But, but you don't, you, well, one of the things is, is that you start somewhere, and with any type of program. I mean, if we put in 100 in the industrial park, I'd tell you right now, they'll be overkill. There's not enough vehicles, there's probably not 100 vehicles that...
Somebody just said 20. Who said 20?
That's it.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, no.
And what's our contribution? Is it $30,000?
This is $30,000 for the entire grant application.
Well, anyway, board, we have four resolutions.
May I ask the board on this one, can we at least apply?
Let me finish.
Okay.
We have four resolutions, all of which you've outlined.
Okay.
Okay.
What, we could apply, and in the interim, maybe you could reach out to the HIA and see if they would split the cost.
Yeah, I think we could probably get something from, you know, the HIA.
But if you don't apply, by the 16th, we're done.
That's correct.
But that would be what I would think would be a good idea.
Keep in mind, we've been working on a very tight deadline from, from May to June. Keep in mind, we've been working on a very tight deadline from, from May to June 16th, and there's a lot of things that we had to make a decision.
If these come up, Frank, perhaps...
Unless you gave me one back, or, yeah, she gave me one back.
I don't know when you get them, but when you get them, maybe you could let the board know, and, I mean, we could have scheduled a special work session, had somebody scheduled it. You know, I don't know how late you get them from...
Okay. We, we're noticed, I have the correspondence here, we got noticed by the supervisor the first week in May, we sent the first memo to the town board.
The second week.
The second week, May 12th, I think, is what we sent the memos, and we were, we outlined at that time, our preliminary review, there was a whole list of things that we thought that were eligible for. We then had to make a decision, because there's, we can't, we don't have resources to make all the applications, so we went forth on these four, and actually made some changes, even in, on the NYSERDA one, on the electronic, electronic...
And each of these is a one-time match?
Well, the one for the marketing of renewable energy, that's the one, the three-year program, three, $30,000 per year.
Right.
That's a, that's a supplement, that's the successor to our Green Homes program.
So, I will read them on?
Can I ask you, Frank, also, on the, go back to grant one, on the indoor recycling, recycling.
Yes.
Could you make sure, because I know Matt and Russ are involved in that, too, that you three folks stay in touch with each other on that?
I have no problem with that, yes.
Going in the same direction?
No problem. Thank you.
Frank, are there a lot more grants out there for different, for the towns, for the chambers, for business improvement?
Yes, there are. What we did was, we rapidly went through, there's a list, the consolidated funding grants, and we, we only got the list, like I said, the first week in Maine, so we went through it the best way we thought was available, but there may be somebody, I'm assuming the other departments got the same list, and they went through it as well, for what they need.
Do you think there are grants for downtown revitalization?
Um, there was a grant for, I did outline one for the board about downtown parking, but what the state is doing with those particular grants, there's very, they say that there's a 10% match in the municipality, but what the reality is, is there's a 70 or 80% match. What they're saying is, with those grants, that there, a lot of those grants are, they're expecting you to get other funds from, let's say, chambers of commerce or private to match, and that the town share must be, let's say, ten, minimum of 10 or 20%. So, we discounted all the grants where the share was more than 50%.
But Frank, just quickly, and I'll let you go, but if you were to apply for a grant like that, even though you have to find matching funds, was the first step for the town to do it and get accepted, and then the town would go possibly to the county or the chambers or the state?
Yes.
So, that would be something that we should forge ahead with, right? And then, if we can't get the matching funds or someone to help us out, but at least we've tried.
Well, okay, the, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I think for this round, we have a deadline for this round.
Oh, I understand, by June 16th, I mean...
Okay, but, you know, we don't know what's going to be around next year, we can only guess what they...
Is it just once a year it comes around?
Now, what the state does is, through the consolidated funding program that they have, that's the way it works. In other words, the state used to have every department do its own time schedule and everything else, and what happened was, they, the new governor felt that our grant programs are helter-skelter. So now, what they have done is, they develop what they call regional councils, their local councils, they review your, all types of grant applications.
Okay, no, that's fine, you don't have to go into that.
And then they, and then what they do is, they tell you what's viable. The, the problem is now, is that everything is a sudden surge or nothing.
Okay.
So, and that's the problem.
But, but if you were to do something like that before June 16th, would you have to have the matching funds before June 16th?
Yes.
Okay, okay, we'll work on that next time.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Is this one of them you sent up, the cement mixer?
That, that shouldn't be, I think it's already on the agenda.
Okay. Will you be able to check it, it's on?
I think so.
There was two of them that I was able to get on for the deadline, just after the Our purchasing department needs to send them over in a more timely fashion.
Okay, one I talked to Matt this morning about, I had not seen this before, there was no discussion about putting vending machines in the parks, did anybody, did you all know about that?
I don't know.
You did not?
No.
So why do we want to do that?
Well, we got the proposal at the last month's board meeting.
Yeah, someone stood up, yeah.
Yeah, from the current concessionaire.
What, he spoke at the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, to install vending machines in two parks.
It's a concessionary, right?
Yeah.
Certain things, right?
Memorial and what's the other one?
Armory.
You know, I would just raise with you and board, in the past, and Eddie, you know about this, where little leagues wanted to put their own vending machines so that they would be the recipients of the profit, and we've always said no to that. Do you recall that, Tom?
I know we have, but this guy is a concession...
Eddie, do you recall?
Yeah, I know, I think, I think what this particular...
This guy is a gentleman.
...concessionary now, of course. Going at it, he is a concessionary, and we do have concession contracts in many of the parks.
Yes.
Just looking to go into these parks, I guess they're on and there now.
Yes, and the agreement would provide that they would...
An additional vendor?
Yeah, that they would waive any claims for damage or theft, so the town would be protected.
Now, these other ones, are they still working on, they, they give a fee to the town, correct? When we pick these other vendors?
Yes, for the vending machines, we'll get $150 per location.
So the town would get some money for that?
Yeah.
They have to go out to bid, though, now, they're going to have to put something out to bid if we go, or no?
No, for, because it's under the current concession, that's the way we're going to do it.
So that's a, that's a redone?
Yes.
Is $150 a month a reasonable number?
Well, it's estimated that she's going to make around $500.
It's really more about service, a lot of times, because some of those parks have nothing there.
Yes.
So if they're, if they're playing sports or whatnot, and they need a bottle of water, they don't bring it, there isn't any avenue for them to get it there.
Yeah.
So that's why we got involved with the other one.
Yep.
Okay. You have two litigation matters?
Yes.
Do you have a litigation, a contract matter? Do you want to just...
I'm sorry, yeah.
Man has two litigation matters, Mr. Nacoro has a contract matter, so if anybody has any...
Well, I'd just like to raise a question with Matt, because I know he was having communication with the owner of that property up in Kings Park. Can you discuss the status of that?
Well, we sent out a, a letter of interest indicating that the town's appraisal was $230,000. The asking price is $279,000, so I did speak with the property owner, and he indicated that the, his price is negotiable, but he wanted to see the comparables that we use to arrive at the $230,000. So I provided that to him, and he's going to call me back.
Call you back.
Yep.
Okay.
I have one issue, supervisor, on, on the agenda, it is five-day, it's a transfer of $50,000.
Yeah.
To part-time salaries.
Yeah.
In speaking to parks personnel, I just want to suggest that biggest problem and complaints we're getting in the parks are fields, condition of the fields, and some of the playgrounds. So, I might suggest that perhaps we ought to, instead of using this for part-time salaries, break this amount up, if we're going to spend it, a certain amount for overtime for full-time staff, and a certain amount of the $50,000 for materials such as clay or sock. I think that might be a better way to expend the funds.
Okay. I just want to pass this around. I just called Sandy this morning, this is her comment on that.
Okay, so, if somebody gives me a phone call now and then, I'll explain it to you as to why that occurred. Russell Barnett came to me last week and said that he had to clean a stream to allow the flow of the water, as you all know...
Right.
...to reduce the groundwater.
Ed, take those copies with you.
And, and he said that the parks are having a difficult time getting people to do that. And I said to Sandy that, look, June 3rd is the meeting, I can talk to the board, we could transfer two or three laborers out of the highway department to do this work without impacting your department, and in effect, without impacting the budget. What came back to me, and I think you were part of that conversation a little, was that, oh, I'll use seasonals, and that was the end of the conversation. If I had my druthers, which I wanted to do, discuss with you folks, talking to highway superintendent, integrating four or five laborers to do that work, it wouldn't take very long, I don't think it's more than a week's work, and then we wouldn't be transferring the $100,000 or $50,000. So, when you see these agenda items, you guys can pick up the phone and ask me why it's appearing on there. So that's the genesis of the $50,000. You may well be right, that $50,000 ought to be better used on the ballfields or the parks than in cleaning a stream, when we can integrate some laborers from another department.
You know, the way it's set up, I mean, these part-time salaries using the $50,000, not going to get very much benefit from it.
That's just for the streams only?
I don't, I'm talking, I don't know anything about any streams, anyone involved in that.
Seasonal workers are not part-timers.
Mm-hmm.
And the suggestion was made by the parks director that I can use seasonals to do it, and that was what happened. My first choice was, I told you, integrate three or four people out of one department, save all that money, and then if you have to use the money, use it for a better intended purpose. But no one called me on it, and that's where we're at.
I have no problem with it, I'm the liaison for parks, and she's contacted Eddie, she's contacted Lynn, she's contacted you.
No, I called her this morning.
And she's never contacted me, so I don't know what she wants. Maybe she should follow a little protocol, let her liaison know what's going on.
Well...
Might take umbrage better.
I had called this morning just to see what she really does need, because I, I just need to know before, so I can vote intelligently, and the letter that she sent back is the letter that we just received. And if she needs it, this is what she said, she puts it in the capital budget, so...
Okay, well, that's the genesis, so it's, the board's in your court. Do you want to make the transfer?
All I'm bringing to the board is this, I can certainly tell you, and I have probably 50 complaints and expect another 100, about fields, the condition of the playing fields, being hazardous, being not maintained for the past 10 or 12 years. And frankly, what they need is, they need to be reconstructed, and I just don't see how putting part-time slash seasonal employees with weed whips are going to accomplish that. I mean, I have photos here, there is a stark difference, frankly, in every other municipality from Smithtown. You have leagues here that are scheduling all their games as travel games, because they don't want to play here. And I ran that department for years, it's very upsetting to me, and I'm just making a suggestion, as I did to the parks personnel, that you have part-time seasonal help there now. You can always add more, there's always a surplus in personnel lines at the end of the year. So if you needed some more to weed whip and do tasks like that, but seasonal do, that's fine. This is about construction. You need equipment, heavy equipment, material, you need full-time staff, dock hoes, payloaders, sand pros that do the raking, and you need clay and sock, if we're going to, if we're going to reconstruct them. If not, that's the board's choice, then you can move the water off them on a Sunday, you'll, you'll see the complaints, I'm sure we've all gotten them. It rains on Thursday, they cancel all the games right into the following week, they don't even play on it.
You know, it's just extremely unfortunate that we paid six-figure salaries to our parks director and assistant director since you were the director, and we promoted both of them to incompetency. And when you left, these fields were all perfect, we spent $850,000 of Brown's load alone, millions of dollars at Mills Park, and these guys just let this thing fall apart.
But let's get back to my original scenario.
I know.
The director of environmental waterways has a problem with a stream.
Right.
Compton tells me that he needs a couple of people out of parks to clean the stream. He then indicates that they're having a tough time because they're using personnel for other things. I then say, and I'll repeat it again, and if there's no communication between the town council and the supervisor, then we wouldn't be having this conversation. And I suggested to her, I will get all to Russell, I will get you two or three laborers out of the highway department, and I would have discussed that this morning, you all would have agreed, and we'd have made the transfer. It's a temporary situation. The answer was no, I can use seasonal workers. I know nothing...
The answer from Sandy was no?
Yes. I don't know anything about whipping or whatever this memo says.
Same in 20 minutes, yeah.
So if someone sees an agenda item, has a question, well, maybe you might want to call the supervisor, ask them why that made the agenda, because I probably signed off on it.
I think we got the agenda yesterday, Mr. Beckham, so we're asking about it today.
Oh, you mean that item was on yesterday?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, that's why I'm reading the...
Well, no, Eddie, you inquired about that before that made the agenda. Whatever, listen, okay.
That's absolutely not true. I saw it on the agenda, Mr. Supervisor, which is what provoked me to make a phone call, to say, why would you flood that department with more seasonals?
Well, then why wouldn't you have made that phone call to me? Why wouldn't you have made that phone call to me?
I was asking that question, I got my answer, I brought it up at the work session.
Okay. You called a parks department employee who didn't tell you that there was an offer to transfer somebody out of the...
I know nothing about an offer to transfer.
That's what you all found out, you had called.
I would, if Russ Barnett needed help in streams, I would have certainly have supported transferring temporarily some highway people to do that work.
Yeah, well, good.
What I'm saying is...
Once again, all you had to do was make the phone call, whether it was yesterday...
What prevents us from using the highway department people now?
You have to use, you have to do a transfer.
This is just if I might, I just want to illustrate the stark difference. This are emails I've been getting every weekend from multiple teams. This is a field played in Riverhead by our little league teams on the travel team, and I'm proud to say that when I ran this department, that's exactly what our facilities looked like.